Stacy, can you read our mission release statement, please?
Yes, our mission statement. In a caring, concerned community, we prepare our students with the skills to reach fulfillment, and Excel is productive members of an ever-changing world. And our belief statement is, we believe working together with students, family, and the community, the school is accountable for student achievement. We believe success is achieved when students become lifelong learners and responsible citizens. We believe all students will learn. We believe in all individuals treating each other with dignity and respect. And we believe in the continuous improvement improvement of our school district.
Thank you. Dr. Bishop, is there any additions to the agenda?
There are no additions to the agenda.
Approve of the agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Cash flow report.
It's a recommendation of the superintendent that we approve our cash flow report as presented. Current cash balance of $2,571,690.23. Investment accounts of $627,248.86. Anticipated cash receipts, $286,098.80. Estimated total available, $3,467,37.89. And our projected end cash balance of $3,48,372.32.
Motion to accept the cash flow report?
So moved. Supported.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Ron?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. Presentation, H I S D Business Service Presentation.
It's a recommendation of the superintendent that we invite H I S D staff to give business service presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to join you tonight. I'm Julie Muz, and I'm the Finance Director at the Bureau of I S D. And we just want to take a few minutes tonight to introduce ourselves and share some of the benefits that we provide to you. And so I'll just start by introducing myself. Like I said, I'm Julie Muz. I am a Harbor Beach graduate, so it's always great to be back in the building. And I attended C M U and got my Bachelor's of Accounting degree there. And then I got my Master's degree at S P S U, Educational Leadership Degree with a focus in school finance. I am a C P A, and I worked for several years for Niski and Popple, a local accounting firm, as an audit manager. And then after that, I went to Laker Schools, and I was a local school business manager for three years there, prior to going to the I S D. I've been there for 11 years now. When I started at the I S D, my team was four. There were four of us in the office, me included. And today, I have a team of 10. So we've had a lot of growth in the past 11 years, and mostly because of the business services area. In 2008, your district came on board with us. Your superintendent at the time was Ron Craft, and your business manager was Connie Fish. And Connie was retiring, and so you reached out to us to contract. And so I was very hands-on in the beginning. Typically, when we bring a business school on, I'm very directly involved. But as I get a team together, and that team starts working self-sufficiently, then I back off, and I become much more indirect, which I am now for your school. Stacy, as you know very well, you see her face a lot, is the one really leading your school business services along with her team. Stacy and I do work together in the background, and I do sit with her for each budget amendment prior to her bringing it to your board. So she's doing a great job. You're going to meet the rest of the team today. But before I pass the presentation on to them, I just want to go over some of the, a few of the benefits that we do provide to your district. So the first thing I want to point out is the expertise of the team. These ladies right here are all skilled in their specific areas. So the way we kind of designed our business managers, our business services, is to have each role really perform a task for all the schools that we serve, so that they become masters in that area. So for example, accounts payable Stacy does for multiple schools, so she's become very skilled at that task. Another area that we believe in is continuous improvement, and we provide many learning opportunities for the team. And so with that as well, we provide cross-training. So for example, in an emergency situation, if you have a payroll person out at your district, payroll has to happen. So that's very difficult at a local school district with one payroll person. In our office, we actually have three people who perform payroll as their main role. So if something happens to one, we do have two people who can help support that. We also focus on office efficiencies and best practices. We pride ourselves in high-quality work. We're constantly looking for ways to improve, and we try to bring consistencies throughout our district. So if we see something working great at one district, we try to incorporate that into other districts as well. And then the last benefit area I want to mention is that of segregation of duties. A lot of times, local schools that are small are written up in their audits because they have lack of segregation duties or just is not enough business office staff to segregate tasks in order to mitigate fraud risk. Because we have a large staff at the I S D, we're able to segregate those more. We partner up with the staff at your district to make sure that when we're assigning those duties, that we don't run into any of those issues. So those are a few of the things, and we'll talk about a little bit more as we go on. But with that, so now I'm going to hand it over to Stacy.
I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time talking about myself, because I hear quite a bit. But this is really the first opportunity that I've had to talk about my background. So just an update, basically, I have my Bachelor's degree from C M U and a Master's degree from Baker College. And then through M S B O, which is the Michigan School Business Official, they have certification tracks, and I have the Chief Financial Officer Certificate through that organization. And then also ASBO, which is the Association of School Business Officials International, has a certification program. And so I am a Certified Administrator of School Finance and Operations through them. I did have 10 years auditing experience before working with the I S D. And then when I first got hired at the I S D, I spent three years working as a special education attorney. So a lot of experience was involved. And I work with the budget, the audit, the grants, some of those bigger picture. I, that's, excuse me, when you see me here, it's usually for the budget or the audit. But I couldn't do what I do without everyone on our team. So I'll let them introduce themselves and tell you what they do for the district.
Hello, my name is Stacy Flores. I live in Beddix, and I'm originally from Texas. I have over 26 years' experience in payroll. I used to work for Walbro, Gemini Group. I work for a small car dealership also, where I do their payroll. So I've kind of done the big and the small. I do, I do process payroll for Harbor Beach and the payroll liabilities. I do W-2s, 941s, and the 403B reportings. There's 26 pays a year, and we have about 80 employees. So that's about 2,080 checks that are processed throughout the year excluding special payrolls. We do have the payroll liabilities that are processed bi-weekly as well, and they include 941s, the Medicare taxes, Mesa Health Insurance, the O R S retirement, the 403B contributions, HSA, and all those things. So that's pretty much what I do.
Just keep them right down the line. We're all nervous. Stacy, some of you probably know me. I'm a Harbor Beach graduate. I've been at the I S D since 2009. My M S B O, the Michigan School Business Official, my track is Business Office Specialist. I attended Zanott Valley and Baker College. And for you, I do accounts payable. That's something that we process bi-weekly. I also take care of your 1099s at the end of the year. And I do want to comment that you guys do a really good job getting your game efficiency checks. That's really good. Aside from that, I also go ahead and check all of your vendors against a debarred vendor list for federal and state. If we were to pay a debarred vendor, it could compromise some of the funds that you receive. So we do double-check that. Can I ask you a little bit, Julie?
My name is Julie Toner. I reside in Port Austin with my two children. I am a North Carolina graduate. I have my Bachelor's in Business Administration with a focus in Human Resources. And I also have completed an M S B O track with the Human Resources Certificate. For your district, I take care of the cash receipts. So anytime you have a deposit, I take care of entering that information into Skyward. Your journal entries, anytime cash is transferred from another bank, you have to move money around from one account number to another account number, I take care of those journal entries. I also assist on entering interest and reconciling your seven-bank reconciliations. And then I work with people at your district like Dub on the Registry of Personnel reports and some other things like that. But that's what I do. I do that for all the districts, so I'm familiar. If I find something that's working well for one, I try to implement it in another.
All right, well, that's the team. Before I open it up for questions, there's just a couple of things I wanted to point out in this handout. If you open it up to the two pages in the middle, on the right is a box on the bottom that talks about our daily, weekly, monthly routines. These types of items are things I think most people think of when you think of business services, performing payroll and accounts payable, and the things that we've all talked about tonight. But I just wanted to point out the box on the left, compliance and efficiency, just to bring your attention to some of the things that we do that you may not really necessarily be aware of. And some of these are some really big ticket items, even though they're one-liners on here. These are a lot of things that have come up recently that are just new things that come down from the state and regulations that this team works on throughout the year for your district. And then on the, yeah, the very last page is looking to the future. These are some items that are upcoming, that we are staying alert to. We go, like you mentioned before, to a lot of trainings, and we've been hearing a lot of these things coming down the pipeline, some of them effective for next school year. So we are keeping up to date on these things, so that we're prepared to keep our district compliant. And with that, does anybody have any questions for any of us?
One question. I'm here, it says, we use abbreviation, O R S. What does that stand for?
Office of Retirement Services.
Well, that's retirement, okay.
We use a lot of abbreviations. We try to catch them all.
Anybody else have any questions?
Looking to the future, improved budget presentations to include visual representations, trends, and future projections. This will be looking at things like we have coming up, like for, let's say, next year, we'll have payroll, we have probably another boiler that's going to go bad, and we have another building that needs to be repaired. We'll be looking ahead at all that stuff to see where we're going to be at, and have a projection on that before we go into the next budget.
Yeah, Dr. Bishop and I have already started working on, next year, looking forward, we are hoping to get a three-year projection. We'll look at enrollment trends, property tax trends, things like that, so it's.
You'll have a presentation, so we'll see all that. Wonderful.
How many districts besides us are you guys?
I'll be counted. We have 10 total, including you.
10, 10 total. And how do we compare in your business scheme to the other nine?
Compare as in with?
Time.
Time?
Time.
I think our districts are pretty consistent with that. We've put so many things into place over time for those consistencies. So like I mentioned, these things, and Julie kind of mentioned, she even recognizes, and she's working on multiple districts, that some things are working differently in a district, but things work quicker or more efficiently than we've put those into practice throughout the other districts. So we've really, we've really tried to streamline things.
I was just kind of curious if you, if you do different services for different districts, or is everybody pretty much the same?
Okay, it's pretty much the same. We have one district ugly right now that has just contracted for payroll only, but the rest of them, it's full services, payroll, accounts payable, budgeting, pretty much all the same services.
Do we check stuff against our master plan? Are we have a master plan, or we have a school improvement plan or other?
When Stacy and I go through things, we do try to match it up with what our future projections are, where we want to be. I think there's more to say that we're perfect with that, but we would be a long way off of that.
But I mean, so you didn't, but we could look at a picture, but we could see that.
Yes. And particularly, it comes out in things like your school improvement plan through the title reins in particular, because they're all tied in very tightly through title. Where you have to, you can't, you're not supposed to be spending even a dollar out of title without it being tied back into the district improvement title. So those are pretty tightly aligned.
Any, any other questions? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Being none? Action item, consent agenda.
Recommendation of the superintendent that we approve our consent agenda as presented. Support?
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. New business, the boiler purchase.
I'd like to try to word this in a way that we can capture it well. It's a recommendation of the superintendent that we accept the bid and approve the purchase of boiler from Rapsin Refrigeration out of capital projects after QZAP dollars are spent as presented. Basically, I'm trying to say, spend everything we can on QZAP first and anything but overcome on a capital project.
Is this the only thing you got yet?
We, we have two. So on the Rapsin bid, in the bottom corner, you'll see the bid is $59,000 for 100 change. Just above that, there is, well, it might, it's not, but I, there's an option here. Let me, let me.
You got that one, John?
Yeah. Just want to make sure to get it apples to apples.
4500.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm going to say. You guys, and for here. Jeff and I, you guys know John Kowalski. We wanted to get it apple, but the one that was in the board packet did not have that note on it, which makes it the same-sized boiler, okay? And I'm not sure the one in the board packet had that, that alternate. So I wanted, and Jeff, Jeff and I just talked about it just, just this afternoon. If I don't, if we don't have that alternate piece, which is still makes Rapsin the lowest bidder, but if we don't put that alternate piece in that capacity, then it's not apples to apples with Johnny Green for it. And I apologize for that. It's just timing that I didn't notice that alternate piece would, would keep it the same size.
Raps is local.
Yeah. So that being said, I'll give, some of this you guys already know, but just, you know, like step up to it. We normally run off of four boilers. Last year, after Christmas, we lost one boiler. So we've been running on three instead of four. One of those three was at a different time on life support. You think you would agree with that?
I took it apart from the heat exchange, it's way back then, so it's on its last leg.
It's on its last leg, so we need at least two to be running in the building. I mean, and that's pushing those, those two. In my opinion, it's not, for the one that's completely gone, it's not a matter of if we're going to do it. It's like, we gotta do it. It's a, it's a matter of how much can we take out of QZAP, and we don't have those final totals yet, but it is an allowable expense out of QZAP. I think Stacy would agree. There's going to be dollars left for QZAP, but until all the punchless pieces are done, I can't tell you the exact dollars that'll be left in QZAP.
Do we have a guess?
I would think it'd be over $10,000, if I can considerably over $10,000.
But not $20,000?
I don't think so. If I was to guess, if I was to be conservative, I would say it'll be more than 10, but I don't think you should count on more than that. And otherwise, I give you, you come back with like a big positive surprise. But I don't think it'd be much more than that.
Is the system all cleaned down now with the? Yeah, it is. It's a long time, question, I don't know, but I'll just show you guys what it was. This is what it was like, and this is what it's like today. So you've got, what a project that was. Getting the filtration system working, a little plus on the system, so we'll be able to eat from now on.
One of the, one of the reasons to wait for the boiler, even though we knew it was down, is because it's the dirty blood put on, put a new boiler into a system that's running this through, where Jeff has been working on this since summer.
Yeah.
Since, well, maybe before summer, yeah, really, to try to clean up the fluid that runs through the boilers.
That's what I call, it's a 40% mixture. That should happen before they do. This is from Panico. This is our last report on the system, fluid in the system. Everything looks good, we said. And now this keeps sending the sand into the water.
We talked about it.
Yep. I'm not too good. Big songs. The thing's, pretty perfect right now, is keep it going and keep the filtration going and we're on the right track.
I think it's good that we're doing maintenance on these things now, because I don't think it would get.
What I did on the other three boilers that are still running, I took a long 15-foot flush, and I actually ran them home through the summer, and I tried to give them as clean as possible. They're still, they got scarred bad. They really got scarred bad, and they're, they're only running, like, I can only give them a run on three stages. It should run on four stages. Can't run them on four stages because they're longs off the floor, because they just can't push the water through them quick enough. They're just plugged up.
You get a lot of pressure now with last year?
Yeah, we have a lot better pressure, a lot cleaner. That's trouble with that dirty water that was in there that was getting baked on food changers and causing scale, 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 and that's why one had blown last year, it was so scaled up, it just couldn't take it on at first. Is it more heat in the building now? It's still early, but it's more, like, the system? Everything's heat, every room in the school is heated as of right now. Yep. I took a lot of pipes down and even out, like, choice out these rooms, the plugs solid. Plugs solid.
That's had a history in that area.
So anything right now that I know is heating.
So how long before we have to have one of those other three ones replaced?
I would like to see it in the plan, like, maybe in a year or two, two for sure.
Within two years?
Yes.
We need to buy another complete boiler at what, like, same price as this one roughly? $60,000?
That's something we'll talk about. The duty of this new boiler is 95%. It will be a lead boiler. So on the days when it's 10, and it gets up to 25, during the day, that thing will modulate in, by the temperatures outside, and that's why it's going to be so efficient. So truthfully, that's the lead boiler. We could probably go with a cheaper boiler, like maybe a $20,000 boiler on the other ones, because those will be used in the, in the colder months, and they'll run full. So they won't, they won't be, they don't need deficiency there because they're running top notch.
So how much, how much savings wouldn't we have if we did it into the year with the city water treatment?
I don't know the number on that, but we're going to save a lot of money with the side vision. Right now, Deckville Schools has two of the same ones, Deckville Hospital has the same two, and the county building in Beddix has the same two. The Quest, they may not be the same B2, but they're the same Quest boiler that's on there.
Okay, the same, so that, so they have two identical ones? They don't have a lesser one, like you're talking about?
They probably only needed two in the building, like, the county building right on the east two. I don't know exactly that number, so they have. So, but they're, that'd be their new order.
So basically, if we had to have another one, we would have one under $60,000 roughly?
Possibly. Depends what we decide to do then.
Yeah, pretty.
We could.
We could.
We could. Yeah, to save the district money, we could do that. That's, we talked about that already. So. And doesn't pay to get it now, say, they give you two boilers, you know, better deal on two boilers, or do another like that?
Jeff and I didn't get it, I didn't unless you had conversation.
No, I just want the one boiler right now. I understand, but it's going to be down the road, it's a better deal.
I think as they reach their life expectancy, we'd be prudent to put a program in where we're shoving one out every so many years.
We did that before too, and we never followed it that way.
Well, it's nice to see the ones we have now.
I know, I mean, that's the big thing.
These here are from the new addition.
2001.
Yeah, they're all 20, 20 some years old.
Yeah.
But they only have, realistically, they're saying 20 years. They could go 30, they could go, you know, 15.
Well, 15 years on the ones that are there.
Yeah.
And 20, like, up to 25 on the new.
At least, at least if we're doing one every couple, three, four years, then we're not doing four at once.
Oh, yeah, I understand that, but.
Right. We need to put it in the budget for the next couple of years and then see where we're at. It's hard in school, it's to keep some kids in school, and that.
Yeah, well, I don't like surprises, that's what matters, right?
Just, I'm keeping them going the best I can.
Can we go back just for a second to what Ron is saying, and I don't know the answer to that, is if there's any power in, if there's any cost saving by doing a, doing a second one now?
I could ask him, you know, we're, you're still going to be up in that 120 probably range, which is, I could ask him, and I agree with you there, he'd be nice to do two, you know, but, talk to Dave and see.
He's going to be in.
Give us a deal.
Yeah, he's going to be in soon, wasn't he?
Yeah, Dave, we're actually still having trouble with the boys. I put two new gas wells on one end and we're still having trouble with the fire in the right, but so it'll be in, I think, tomorrow to keep Justin there on and. That's really, they keep nickel and dimeing that one, man. I know. I agree. Yeah. You're right.
We can definitely, if we did this one tonight, we could ask, because it's not going to be, we could ask him about that, potentially bring it back to the board just for consideration, depending on if he says something. I mean, I trust your opinion on.
Here's what we, I like your idea, it's a great idea, and I appreciate you bringing that up. What we should do, why, we drain the boiler down a little bit to put the bigger, see that, the old boilers are typically, you may have this water line, you're going to need about a four-inch. If we decide we're going to do this in the near future, we should do that as well, so we don't drain the boiler back down a little bit. So this stuff we can talk about, but I like that idea.
You're saying the, the manifold for two would have to be upsized?
Yeah, well, that's what this bid is. As new boiler going, we'll have all that.
Honestly, while you got the thing apart.
That's what I'm saying.
That would be the time to do it.
Exactly. I like that. Appreciate that.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept the Rapsin bid?
Support? Would you add something to that, to the motion? That we do ask to see if we get a discount, we get a second, we put that in motion. And is your motion, no, it's not?
Or at least do the plumbing upsides, so that if we get another at some point, that we don't have to change it all.
You're going to have to do that a second time.
Right. They could adapt to what's there now, but, but in the future, if you need the larger pipe than it's there already, then it'd be.
But that's probably not in the bid.
We're only bidding for one boiler.
Yeah, but the adaptation banning the other stuff.
That would be extra.
That would all be extra.
That would be, yeah.
It would all be.
We can ban it another way.
Yeah.
To make a motion and to accept this bid, and that the superintendent brings it to the first November, I mean.
Okay.
Is there any further discussions? What was the final motion? We're going to accept this bid, and then he's going to bring a cost for either putting another boiler in, if we can get a break on it, or? Questions?
You know, Dave, the one that does our boiler inspections?
Yeah, it's the, yeah.
So he's bad at the one.
Yeah.
Ron?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And myself, yes, motion carries. Uh, others? Anybody have anything else?
Thank you guys for coming today.
If there's no objections, meeting adjourned.